To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any comments?
Old business, approve resolution, approving contract for utility full replacement treaty trimming services with Kyle.
It's just basically a resolution to cover the contract. That contract was awarded by your council back in April and fifty thousand dollar contract, and I just know there's no resolution for that to cover that one. Actually, the service has already been done, taken care of, we've just got to pay the bill, and that's the resolution to cover the contract.
So we're doing the back of the pack, but we're doing...
Right, great.
Make a motion to approve the contract for the utility full replacement.
Any discussion?
Earl?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
New business, approve a resolution approving contract by EDA for the Community Development Block Grant Program Contract eighteen dash WS dash oh twenty-six, the amount of six hundred thousand.
That's the larger project contract.
Yeah, we got it. We got six million.
That'd be nice if they worked that way.
Well, Your Honor, good job, Jack. Let's approve that at minus of a zero.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Scott?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Discussion of new home construction incentives.
I'm going to click onto my packet here for that. This has been a project that we've been talking about internally for a few weeks now, and we've made a presentation of this plan to the county board yesterday, give them that under consideration. At any rate, the plan is calling for the city to incentivize new housing, single family housing development. Based upon our discussions with the 360 program as well as other community business leaders, there's been a recognition that to close the gap between what is the market price for housing versus the price for construction is made of, is a problem for not just Bloomfield, but every place really, not in just Iowa, but Midwest and the country. And the incentive program here is effectively try to narrow the gap between what the construction price is and what the market price is for existing housing. I think that what has been developed is a rather aggressive program from the standpoint of trying to really make a commitment to doing this. For properties within the TIP district, we're talking about providing a fifteen thousand dollar base for the program that would be augmented further by a hope, we asked the county board to match another five thousand or match another up to five thousand in private sector, would come up with five thousand dollars to entice employees to build homes in their community. For those properties that are not within the TIP district, there has been a discussion about a proposal that's put out that we would do a similar incentive, but something that's a little bit cheaper, a ten thousand dollar base with an abatement of municipal property taxes, only municipal property taxes for three years. In other words, that fifteen thousand dollars would be matched by approximately fifteen thousand dollars of city incentive tax abatement in combination for non-TIP areas. That coupled again with a five thousand dollar, up to five thousand dollar match with the public sector or private sector and hopefully the county could bring twenty-five thousand dollars to the table for a house that we expected the low end to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in value. That is a significant commitment. Somebody came up with thirty-five hundred to five thousand dollars of down payment, they could have twenty percent down on the house. So you can get, assumably, if the banks so approved, you could get a very typical loan. Now, other banks might even incentivize that more, but I mean, the real point here is that we're trying to get people into houses, into new construction. Chris points out that the average age of a house in Bloomfield is eighty years. That means that the average house is constructed pre-World War II. Our housing stock needs a lot of work in all segments of the price range. But we're trying to get incentivizations at the lower end of the price range to entice the people who do the work in this community, the employees that are probably traveling to manufacturing jobs, what have you, from many, many miles away. And the reason why they're doing that is because it's very difficult to buy a house. Rentals tend to be pretty significantly snapped up, if not inadequate for family sizes or family needs as we have in this community. So we're trying to bridge the gap here through this incentivization program to bring employees that are from outside, there's over, I think we said five hundred, six hundred, that come in daily to work here. We need a place for them to live and bolster our community. I'll let Chris talk about locations as far as the map is concerned.
So one of the things we've tried to do is map out where there are vacant lots that are suitable to build on right now. And Gage Michael's has done a lot of this work, I want to acknowledge him, he's here. We've got, see if I can zoom in. I apologize, the mayor pointed out some of these colors are hard to read, are hard to see, but the blue squares, blue rectangles are lots that are eight thousand, twenty thousand square feet, which is a typical size of core, city core lots, right? And the green are twenty thousand square feet and above. So those typically are in your subdivision areas. We've got, funnily enough, thirty-five of each that are available right now. By available, I simply mean there's not a house on them, I'm not saying that they're for sale or that, you know, the owner would let them go. And one of the things we've talked about is TIP district, whether they're in the TIP district versus outside. Of those lots right now, only on our current TIP district, only five of those properties are within the current TIP district. So we can go into any detail you want, but, and to give you some ideas, so they're about...
How many is in urban renewal?
In urban renewal? So I didn't count those, but when you get to...
Is it like early addition, basically?
Yeah, so you've got several out there in the early addition. I asked Gage to remove that because it wasn't part of our...
TIP.
TIP, but, yeah, so these would all be in there, there's another six properties there.
What about that?
And then over in the...
A bunch of green right below it, isn't that in urban renewal?
Right up here.
Right up there.
Do you recall?
I think, I think these are in there.
Thanks. You've done me.
Yeah, I think those were in it too. I think that's in it, isn't it? Because I...
Yeah, so we can check that out, I can pull up another map if you want to look at that. There are what, how many properties were there total residential parcels with detached housing, Gage?
One thousand one hundred twenty-five.
Yeah, so we're looking at what, somewhere around six percent, seven percent of our properties are vacant. Just, it is a range, right? Would you like me to pull up the map?
I'm good, but I guess, that's one step ahead, I mean, that's one step out of the way to move that to TIP, if we decide to, that's what I was getting at, as far as, that would be a lot easier to bring into TIP. What's not in any yellow at all is just a longer process.
Right. The advantage, though, when we talk about doing TIP is the payback comes, is very quick. When you do a TIP project and you lift the value of a bare piece of ground to having a house on it, you're talking about a payback through the increment of that fifteen thousand dollars, you can get tax increment financing to offset that initial investment in one to two years, depending on the size of the house. If we do abatements, obviously the payback is a lot longer. There is an abatement program under the state that we could do irrespective of this, we could say, you know, we're not going to do TIP, we could do an abatement program. And abatements can go up to ten years, they can be for as much as a hundred percent of the property taxes paid. You can't do an abatement in a TIP, but the point being is, is that you're foregoing revenue directly to the city's coffers as well as all the other taxing bodies' coffers to make a housing commitment. Abate programs were really popular before the crash, and then after the crash of the real estate market ten years ago. They were really used by cities that would be considered like on the outer ring of the metropolitan area for New Orleans particularly, by outer ring, like New Perry, for instance, where they were losing growth to closer, in suburban areas that likewise were providing incentives through the property tax abatements, but they were jumping on to be part of the niggas. Places like Muscatine though have also done those kinds of abatements, but the real point here is, is that if you're providing services to these homes and these, the families in these homes, you're going to forego a lot of property taxes through the abatement process. You can get stuff back on the tax bill pretty quick with the TIPS because they grab the increment so quickly and the increment can be so significant. But right now, this is in a proposal introductory phase. Mayor's been involved in this a lot as far as trying to figure out what a proposal is, and then there's probably still more work to be done as far as trying to figure out what would be the best project that we would come up with. But I think if we're going out here and we're saying, we're going to say that we'll do fifteen thousand dollars with a chance, depending on other participation, to go up to twenty-five thousand dollars, that's serious, that is really serious. Right now, what we have on the books is thirty-five hundred dollars to help tear down a house. You've got to get beyond that. Obviously, that's, I don't say it's not working, it's just that it's not a consideration. I think if you're going to do a housing program and want to build houses, utilizing tax increment financing is probably a real good way of doing it. And it's a way that's been being demonstrated to us as a way to effectuate new construction. We've had developers that have come in here, we've had Gilbert come in here and talk about the idea that he could build. It's not manufactured, manufactured houses, not modular homes, where components, wall components would be shipped in, pre-made, and that they'd have as many as five or six different floor plans from which you could work from to build. Obviously, those mass production type of entities reduces the price of the house. But the whole idea here is, is that they could very well help us take a cut of the action, help us do this if they can get some lots here. We know that there are local folks right now actually interested, it seemed like they could get some lots. This map is going to be very essential to some of that decision making. The program is slated to have, and we're still going to work the numbers here, but we talked about having a maximum of twenty outside in TIP, or twenty in the TIP and ten outside the TIP. But that's, that's not going to work, given our final identification, what the lots are, but I think ultimately what we'd be talking about is probably around twenty-five.
I'd say we probably have to back into just the first twenty-five and then...
Regardless, yeah, but do twenty-five and then evaluate the program once we get that twenty-five and say, you know, we're not doing any more, that's not to say we won't, but we need to, effectively re-certify and look to see if we need to change the parameters of the program. But if we put in twenty-five new units, that could have a significant impact on our housing stock. And again, this is an incentive that while it is the same amount for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house versus a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, with the exception that there'd be a little bit more of a property tax abatement on more expensive houses because those houses are more valued. The fact is, is that for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, about fifteen thousand dollars, or twenty-five thousand dollars if you get the right participation, against a house for a down payment, and probably more in the lines of about thirty-two, thirty-three thousand dollars or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the point right now is, is that this is what we're introducing, we need to talk with the realtors a little bit more about this, we need to talk with the county a little bit more about this. But at this point in time, this is a first stab at this program, and it's one that we're trying to put out into the public to generate some input as to whether there's some interest in it.
Anybody got any questions or thoughts, ideas? Kyle, up here, just kind of... Wasn't there something mentioned about if we went ahead and done the, oh, the step before TIP?
Urban renewal.
Urban renewal, the whole town, and we could TIP certain lots? Does that increase the process, or is there a drawback to urban renewal, the whole town?
So when you do, anybody jump in here, but when you, there's a process, it's just going to take time, that's the whole thing. You don't, typically you wouldn't do urban renewal for the whole town, you just do specific areas, targeted areas because there's a need, an economic development need, or, and in this case, we would want to do economic development or housing development, so you would want to target those areas, right, that you, where you need development. The other thing is, you're going to see, we have these ready to go, and if you do that process, I'm not saying we shouldn't start that, but it's going to take time to do that full urban renewal plan and the TIP process, so maybe it is a good time to get started on it.
Do you think there's, there's enough areas scattered throughout the entire town that it would be worth our time? You know, even in neighborhoods you don't think need it, there's areas that could take advantage of it.
Well, I think another thing too, Darren, is that, you know, we've identified those ten properties. Obviously, they're not vacant lots, but we might be able to work with the property owners there to make them vacant and make them remarkable, that's a word, so that, you know, we could actually intensify some of that activity. And I don't know whether that's the be all and end all about housing, I mean, there are other opportunities to consider here that aren't single family, that we might be able to try and address too. There's been talk to ourselves internally about targeting some areas that have dilapidation that could actually be a larger piece of ground for an assembly job to really build, maybe even attached single family, like townhouses or something like that. This program would actually address attached single family, but the whole idea here is, is that we need to have an understanding about what we're trying to accomplish. We also need to have an understanding that we might have to make some adjustments to, not necessarily to the zoning code, but to get some variances, that's going to require involvement of the planning commission. But those kinds of things are typically considered by developers at times blocks to how you can get stuff done. So traditional patterning, but there is a traditional patterning of housing development might change a little bit. On the other hand, recognizing that half of our, of our housing stock was built probably before there was zoning code, question for our community is, what is that standard in? Of course, you know, the newer standards that the zoning code identifies appropriate and acceptable, there can adjustments.
I'm sure there's a lot of adjustments to be extended to that. Do you know, you have any idea, timeline, what, to start urban renewal, to, I mean, if you wanted to go full TIP, where do you look at, three months, six months?
Do you, let's say you're probably looking, I'm just guessing, spitballing here, but let's say you got forty-five days of conversation with the attorney, and then you're going to put it out for a public hearing?
That would run through the planning commission too, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it should.
I mean, I think they all initiates through the planning commission.
I think three, two months would be pretty impressive. I think it's a low end.
It might be, you know, what kind of, by putting this proposal out, it may very well be, you know, what kind of interest we derive from developers to, are they interested in going through a TIP process, or are they interested to go more expeditiously and take the lower number, but at the same time recognize that there could be incentive from the standpoint of the tax abatement?
So how much time does it take off if we already have large roof urban renewal area to just use a TIP?
I don't really know, I'm going to guess probably not that much, because you're still going to have to review the urban renewal, you're going to have the same conversations with the attorney, and then you're, you're going to have to modify, you still have the public hearing. You might, theoretically, you might be able to skip the planning and zoning commission because you're already in an urban renewal district, you're just talking about the tax changes, so you might skip, that might get you fifteen, twenty days.
Okay.
Mayor, what do you think the next step is, is to figure out where the county is? I mean, you can't really formally propose a program until we know if we got participants or not, but...
I think once we get hear back from them, I've talked to them a couple times since yesterday morning they called, we had a couple questions about different things. I think we need to talk to Lois, the tax...
Yeah, well, that's, we, we're, the EV committee is going to be doing that anyway, so we could probably do that.
So, I mean, I think, I mean, does everybody understand it? I mean, can you, we don't, it's kind of hard to, we don't have anything for you to look at.
I'm sorry, I thought I got it in the packet then. It's what you all have been looking at.
It's the same thing we looked at on the board. Yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the areas that are close to a TIP, could you just expand the TIP to include the areas that...
I was thinking all the green dots.
Yeah, then you get out there in the northwest, or do you do a urban revitalization, or do you do a TIP area for...
Go to Beacon, because that's all, all that green up in that corner is all in urban renewal.
Is it?
It's already all in urban renewal.
Okay.
That's what I was looking at.
Clear down to the bottom. See it at the same time. Am I close?
You got to get it out. There.
Is this one right?
There.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah, so you've got the country club, you've got Early's, and you've got whatever this one's called out here, I can't remember the name of it.
That's on the south side of Good Street, the first two blocks are out, and then from the first street on out to the city limits is all in.
That's down here, Good Street.
Good Street's right over your area, yeah. I'd like to see that funny shape down there right behind John's house.
I'll take the trailer off.
Square that up.
Yeah.
Yeah, on, where the ditch is there, right there.
Up to Redmond?
Well, where that...
North.
Please zoom in.
Yeah, the Redmond addition part's not in, square that.
If you basically go to South Street...
Yes.
And West Street, and West Street, and that corner.
Yep, yep.
Chris, we don't have any issues with TIP if it's not contiguous to me.
Yeah.
It has to be contiguous.
So, I mean, you can add two zones, or you can make, you can make distinct zones, but they're going to have different rules and...
But we can still call it one TIP district.
No, we've got to call it different TIP districts. They have to be, my understanding is that one district has to be contiguous, so you've got to have a different thing for each one.
But, I mean, in that, because that takes up quite a few of the green lots, there's a few other green lots in between West Street and sixty-three, just kind of scattered on this part of town, see where they're at there. All the rest of them, except for the one on the south side, Franklin clear at the end, is already in, except for these few that's down here in this corner. The other ones are already in urban renewal, right?
Yeah, so these would all be in, right?
If you did that area, then would all be in, and I don't know, can you, would you do three more blocks and pick up them other five or six green ones, and you've got all but one?
So just join this, like this is what you're saying, do that, that's your suggestion?
Yep.
So you're taking Har Street clear out to West Street, and then South Street to...
Because that green one is down there on...
I mean, you can come all the way over, right?
You can go, you can go up and pick up them other two lots.
There's three green lots right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably, I'm going to guess maybe one or two of those would even be, you know, we didn't, we didn't take any guesses as to whether or not they might sell or not sell here, so...
Right. That's that bitch for us from Walways.
Yeah, part of it.
What's taxes on that right there?
I don't know. I mean, they're nothing.
What would be easier, Chris, to just expand urban renewal and TIP that right off the bat? I mean, would it be a good thing? I mean.
Yeah, so the thing that I don't know is that, I don't, so different, as I understand it, when a TIP district was created, there are rules that are set for that TIP district, right? And when we, if we talk about modifying the TIP district, we could potentially be then applying the new rules to the entire TIP district. And in this case, I don't think this TIP district sunsets, and I think new TIP districts would, so we'd wanna be cautious.
But was all of the TIP district we had now put in at the same time?
No, but it was combined in like the early two thousands and at that point, and then those rules applied, but they weren't because of the type and our community and the rules that were in place then, it doesn't sunset.
So you think we're better off to not add any more TIP area just so what we have don't sunset?
That's my, that's my guess.
Make them separate TIP. Now, I'm not saying I need to, but what I'm saying is, is we have to touch them.
Yeah, but they don't have to be the same district, right? I mean, you could, you could have an adjoining, a district that adjoins that, but that wouldn't make it part of that. They can be their own urban renewal.
It's its own district.
Doesn't have to be, yeah, it can be its own district, it doesn't have to.
With its own set of rules and all that.
So the L shape that we just, or whatever, T shape that we just talked about, we can make that its own district?
Right, it's just that a district has to be, like a city, has to be contiguous. You can't say, I got a spot here and a spot here, is my understanding. I, you know, I don't do this every day, so.
One of the things to understand though is, is that, you know, like with the existing district, we have a lot of increment that's built up. If we create new districts, we're gonna be starting off from scratch, so probably won't have a lot of cash to.
Right.
To roll over, by the way. We might have to actually advance that cash from another resource and then pay ourselves I'm not saying that that's a bad thing, I mean, I think we probably have the capability to do enough of those, but I mean, the real point here is that we need to reverse ourselves opposed to just looking at it as a TIP income offset.
Which way are we better off if it's TIP or a non-TIP area as far as easily setting to, or does it really matter? It matters about six years.
Right, it's timeframe of payback.
The TIP district we get back within one or two, and the non-TIP, it's gonna take six or seven years. So it's about a six, it's about a six-year difference.
In a non-TIP district, you do have the alternative for one hundred percent abatement on new homes, so all taxing bodies. So it wouldn't be any cash upfront to the person, so it's not gonna help the person that needs down payment assistance, but it would provide an incentive for, the same value incentive potentially that you get in a TIP district, it just wouldn't require a cash upfront. They're just gonna see their taxes foregone for three, four years, whatever, that you guys decide.
They'll pay the tax, it's just that, are you talking about in the TIP?
An abated part.
Oh, an abated, yeah, okay. And right now, if you went with a state abatement, I mean, that's everything, that's all taxing bodies, but the one, the program that we're talking about as far as a non-TIP is just a municipal tax payment. So there wouldn't be much controversy from the other taxing bodies about that, although legally, we have the ability to put together housing payment by effectively abating all those crap in taxes. We have that capability of doing it. But just as those districts would complain about losing revenue, we would too. A small, a small municipal, a three-year municipal abatement, still would total almost five thousand dollars on a hundred fifty thousand dollar house. So we would forego five thousand dollars in revenue on a particular house.
Yeah, but if it's big a lot now, you're getting almost nothing.
Well, you're looking to the future. That's, that's the rationale, that's the rationale.
So in other words, we need to kinda get our, all of our options in a package so we can see and. I'm not a fan of that hundred percent abatement program unless you get a one-off deal that somebody can ask about, I don't.
Typically, the way it's done is you'd have an application and say, these are the requirements for that, and, you know, and you decide yes or no for each.
Yeah, you don't, it's not like it's a guarantee. We've, we've tried to negotiate abatements in the past six months, and we certainly didn't go for a hundred percent. We've tried to base it down and all that. But apparently, it's not something that, I, I mean, we have requirements for them to come in too at the same time. But in that one particular case, they weren't interested. It does appear, they don't think that the cost over twenty to thirty years is bandaged. I, it's what individual things.
Something worth stopping. I mean, if you're looking, if you got somebody that's wanting to build a twelve-plex or retirement community or something like that, I mean, that, that'd be something to look at, an abatement on.
Maybe look at that some.
Where you're gonna have a subdivision type thing for a big complex, or it's basically commercial. Well, it's residential taxes, but it's a commercial property, I'd look at that, a tax abatement program on that versus something like that.
And that's what we do with commercial now, if you think about it. I mean, we do a lot of TIP abatement programs with commercial.
So is there enough interest that we should at least have the conversations with attorneys and say, or lay it out, say, where, where should we, you know, find out answers to the urban renewal question about the districts and creations and rules and all that? I mean, are we there?
I think so.
I went, I went.
I made a lot for you.
Oh, and there too, you had, one thing we're also working on too is overlay, so we'll have a gas, sewer, water, electric overlay for utilities on each one on this map. And so actually, you'd be able to know what the cost of putting utilities in, you know, basically, if a person wanna come in and say, hey, I wanna build on this slot right here, they'll see what utilities are, of course, they'll know. Of course, for the way up in the utilities, the more it's gonna cost to run to them or whatever, we can have that in there. And also for, in as far as infrastructure upgrade, kinda like with Redmond example, this is a six-inch main that runs through here to that area, he's actually gonna develop and build on here, he has to go to the ends, so it'd have to be upgraded. There's things like that on infrastructure side, we have to work on, but.
Nice to mention getting easements.
Yeah. So add also the easements. So there'll be overlays, there'll be all that. We do, we've actually in the last, probably had two or three in the last six months that come in and said, hey, I'm looking at building here, where's the utility to that? You know, and so now we're just gonna pull it on that, two years of that. That's part of our G I S too.
Dealing with, yeah, sorry. Just leading into. Gauges, full appointment, probably.
So are you gonna check in on the urban renewal TIP deal, whether it's better to attach it to what we have or to start a whole new?
Yeah, we'll ask that, and I think, Mayor, I think what makes sense is, we have another reason to make an appointment up there anyway. I think we just need to plan a road trip with the three of us, go up there, sit down with them, and ask some of these questions.
Yeah, we've got quite an agenda. We're, we're working with bailers, including right now the, this bond council for the GO bond too, so, I mean, we got stuff going on.
Does anybody got anything they'd like to see differ, more or less?
Is the size of the saddle, is it too much? Not a dollar around?
I thought it was plenty, but that's probably what it's gonna take.
Gets.
We, I don't know how you determine that.
We've kicked a lot of figures around, I mean, the, we look at the utility abatements and offset not to do that.
The municipal abatement, municipal tax abatement for three years is only to offset what we're trying to do with the TIP.
The five thousand is, the match money is gonna be if an employer.
Yeah.
Has somebody moving to town and they wanna kick in five thousand, and that's, the other five of that is, is what we're talking with the county about, possibly getting in to help with that match.
And that, that doesn't mean that it's five thousand dollars, I mean, it's up to five thousand, whatever the, whatever the private sector employer, whoever comes in and says, okay, I'll give you twenty-five, then twenty-five is the number.
Right.
But if it goes beyond five thousand, we couldn't expect the county to go.
Or if it's, you know, if they still do twenty-five hundred, that's one, that's match up to five. Private sector wants to do ten.
Yeah.
So we have.
Apparently worth looking at.
I'd say it's time, it's good enough to take to the attorneys, I guess. Everybody in that agreement? Okay, does anybody have anything else on the housing thing? I thought we'll move on. Approved mayor to sign the statement of support and program purpose for the gas public awareness program. All that is, is, since they changed mayors, we gotta change the signature, and we didn't know if it needed to come to the council or not, so to be safe, if I wanna motion, we'll vote on it, then we'll just.
So moved.
Say that. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Discuss police department pay plan.
I do know this is on the computer. Okay, this, this plan is actually kind of offset, or I shouldn't say offset, but inset into the, the non-union pay plan that we already have instituted for folks in, in our organization. If you take a look at the first page or the two pages that are presented to you, you'll see the non-union pay plan and the, with the chief and the assistant chief set into that plan. The idea here is, is that, given the size of, of the impact here, we're phasing it over a two-year period of time, and that while the police chief would be, because of his tenure here, the police chief would be at top of scale in, in the existing plan on, when this becomes effective on July first of nineteen, he actually wouldn't be getting that number. And if you look at the second page, you'd see that the fifty percent number of that is about five thousand dollars less than top of scale, because that's halfway between what he would be making right now versus on July first, plus the COLA increase of two percent in, in what the actual top of scale would be. But then the second year, you can see effective July first of twenty twenty, the chief would be at top of scale. And that number does not include a, a cost of living adjustment because that hasn't been determined yet. In fact, the two percent is, in July first of twenty nineteen is assumed, but that's because, that's what the ASME contract is called for. The same thing can be said about the assistant chief. The only difference there is, is that you can see that the assistant chief, because he was recently promoted into that position, would be advancing up the scale. And you could see the wage scale as far as July first of twenty twenty as an example, which would actually be what the, the scale would be established for in July first of twenty nineteen without the, the next two percent. So you can see that it's a four-step plan, there would be advancement up the plan if you hadn't gone through it, and recognition and promotion dates would be where you would start to click in how you advance up the scale. To put context to this, the police chief would be in the same wage scale as the community development director and the public works director. So the three of those would be the top of scale, be the top end of his pay plan. And the assistant chief would actually top out at the last step before the starting step of the police chief. As far as the officers are concerned, there's a little bit of difference there, and direct your attention all to, all of this to, to the second page. Again, these steps are steps taken straight from the pay plan that's in existence right now. The only difference is, is that police officer, we're talking about a starting step before they have completion of the academy at forty-seven, two sixty, or six twenty-five, and then we're effectively skipping the next step because it's gonna take more than a year to get someone through the academy, typically fifteen, eighteen months. So that, once they have completed the academy, they start actually at year one, and then they go through the same four steps, which again, the top step of, of a police officer is, is the one step below, the bottom step of the assistant police chief. The rationale for this is, is simple. The market is dictating this. The, recently, a Tomah gave a three dollar per hour across-the-board increase to everybody in their police department because they were feeling pressure from other agencies that they were losing officers to. We are losing officers likewise. They're going, Nathan Johnson is, is listed on here, actually, he's resigned and he's gonna go and work in Oskaloos. One of the things that we thought about as far as doing this police officer business is to recognize that we have to have at least a competitive salary, but we also know that we invest up to twenty thousand dollars in the training of these officers. And the thinking here is, is that instead of a four-year contract, if they come on board with us, they would actually have to commit to a six-year contract. That six-year contract will get us obviously through the top of that scale and then a year beyond that, assuming that the completion of the academy occurs at a regular pace. It also assumes that that twenty thousand dollars is equal to a dollar twenty an hour over those six years. And I don't know if there is any other way that we can effectively commit ourselves to anything more than trying to get six years out of somebody, because the fact of the matter is, is that there's greener pastures, and if somebody is so motivated, then so be it. So while we're talking about, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars at top of scale for a police officer in twenty nineteen, which is what it would be, we're actually saying that, what an hourly rate plus another buck twenty is really what our cost is. How we would budget for that, I would submit that, you know, on average, what we need to do is, is with the number of officers that we have, on average, we probably gotta budget for one replacement a year. Whether we use it or not, that's a whole, whole different story. I think when you look at these promotion dates and anniversary dates, you're gonna realize that we're gonna be bottom-heavy here for a while with a whole lot of people coming on rather new to our organization, but the fact is, is that we're going through a real stretch right now where we're spending a lot of money on academies because we have newer people coming on board. But I think that if you wanted to talk about the cost of, of employing an officer, everybody needs to think in the back of their mind, yeah, another buck twenty an hour. That still makes us way behind, I, I mean, we're really talking about, you know, we're talking six, seven dollars, probably seven, eight dollars behind a Tomah. We're just not gonna be able to compete with that. A Tomah added three bucks, and they're not gonna be able to compete with West Des Moines or, or what have you. Des Moines or, or what have you. And they're all going through the same problem too. I mean, everybody's having to raise, because, you know, if there's upward mobility with the police department, traditionally, the thinking has always been, you get into the department, you go through the steps. That's how it is. Nowadays, to move up, you move out. My brother-in-law started out, uh, as a police officer in Cedar Falls. And he was there seven years. And he found out that there were greener pastures in West Des Moines, and that's where he wound up. So you look at it in that context, you know that there's going to be mobility going on throughout the state here. And this, this is, is in response to some of that going on. I think if you look at the top of scale of, of, um, what we're talking for an officer, it'd be around fifty-three thousand dollars. That would be similar to what an average teacher in this school district is. So, you know, what, what, what is the level? What, what is the appropriate amount? After a while, it's, it's just as much as market dictates any.
How does this compare to the deputy?
Deputies, they're, they're still making more. It gets them in the ballpark, but there's some. You know what they make, chief? Deputies?
Uh, no, I don't. I, I, we are in the ballpark, though. I just don't know for sure how, what the numbers are.
I know that before, before we did this, we were way behind. I, what this ultimately says is, is, you know, there's a lot of cost to run law enforcement. And if we don't run law enforcement, this is what it's going to cost as far as personnel, and we hope that this will work. This has been worked on by the mayor, by Zach and by the chief, and we put it together. And Scott's been involved with it. You're on a committee basis. Earl's been on, involved with it. Get direction. So given that what we would do is effectively incorporate this into the pay plan, simultaneously incorporate it into the budget. Chief, you feel this is enough to be competitive with your officers?
You know, I, I think so. It's hard to... Yeah, I mean, in short term, I really do. Uh, and like, like you said, Oski's running the same problem. It seems like Wayne might get me in West Des Moines, kind of sucking everybody in. And so, Oski's running a problem. Tomo obviously has. They throw a lot of money. So it's a statewide problem. It's, it's not us. And hopefully, at some point in time, maybe those Des Moines suburbs will slow down a little bit. But I think, you know, just talking to the other chiefs and Oski and stuff, that's, they're, they were down, when I worked there, we had seventeen. They're down to ten right now. So everybody's desperate looking for a lease right now.
So minimum number of officers you can run your shifts with?
Uh, we go for tens, and there's six of us all together. And that works pretty well. I, we, in the past, we have, you know, I have five.
But it does overtime? The five, they end up quite a bit of overtime.
Right now, we are, because of this, this new academy, and then we got a very new one that's not even close to being by himself yet. So it's just me, Trent.
Yeah.
Zach.
Assistant chief also is going to salary instead of hourly.
Which is why I put it on that.
Yeah. Because everybody was aware of me.
This is a start. First one, my thing is, it's about two dollars an hour less than what they need to have. But this is a place to start.
It's a huge jump.
Guess we better get our housing program both to increase our faculty.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then you add those people, and they're going to have a lot more services. We're pushing that rock up the hill all the time.
Always.
Law enforcement's become a lot more sophisticated. There's a lot more demands because of the law. I mean, I know that we're still a rural community, but if we are going to do this business, this is what it takes.
I guess the question, one of the questions I have. From the year, from July one of nineteen, that's when this will take effect, right?
Yeah.
So that's this.
Yeah. If you look at the other p, uh, other sides, you can see that on the July twentieth, or, uh, July of twenty twenty, you see that, that column?
Yeah.
That would be what is, would actually be in effect on July one of nineteen. That, that recognizes the two percent COLA increase. So without, with, without the, uh, COLA increase, uh, if, if you made a COLA increase in twenty twenty, that would add to it.
But I guess my question is, is from getting, from getting them to the scale, we're going to be two years getting them to the scale that's on this side.
You're talking about the officers?
Yeah.
It'll be less than two years. However, whenever they get the academy.
But, uh, you're going to phase the pay raise in, in two years. So in July of twenty twenty, that's when they're going to actually be fully invested in the pay raise, in the pay case. I don't know why, why do we give a two percent on top of a four thousand dollar raise in the year in between?
Because the entire pay plan would be adjusted the same way.
Well, I don't... Here's where they're actually in the pay plan is clear over in this year. If you're, if you're getting five thousand dollars from this year to next year, why do you get five thousand plus two percent?
Because the pay plan would increase.
That pay plan don't match this at all.
It does, but...
It does here in this column.
That col, if you read that column, if you read that...
This pay plan is hard to read, for one.
If, if you read that column, the, the, the twenty twenty column.
Yeah.
That is exactly what the pay plan would show in twenty nineteen. Okay? That's with a two percent increase. Now, when you print it...
When you follow the plan, this number is two percent of this number, which is two percent. I understand that. But what I'm saying is, when they're going from their current paid now to the first step of the new pay plan, you're giving them a raise plus two percent.
Yeah, I, we're giving them, they're, they're going to be going, right now, let's just say that, that we were talking about without a two percent increase. You, you put them into...
As this is the starting.
As this is the start, okay? But then when you get to the pay plan itself, the entire pay plan is scheduled to have a two percent.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is, they're not completely in the pay plan...
Till twenty twenty.
Till twenty twenty. So why in nineteen do they get two percent on top of the other fifty percent of their rates?
Because the pay plan would be increased by two percent in nineteen.
They're not even in the pay plan yet.
Well, they would be phased into...
Forget it. You don't get it.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the twenty eighteen, everybody going from the twenty eighteen to the twenty nineteen is going to get two percent. At two percent, they're going to get the two percent, then they're going to get third.
But why, if we're giving them such an increase in pay, why are we giving them the big increase in pay plus two percent? That's what I don't understand. We're already giving them a big five or six thousand dollar boost, so why do we add two percent to the top of that? There's no scale. That don't fit in anything.
Your mayor, the, 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 the intermediate, intermediate two thousand nineteen already incorporates that two percent.
Already there.
Why do we have it in there? Because the pay plan is...
I don't care about that. Well, that's why... If we're starting them out in July one of nineteen at this dollar amount, when we get to July one of twenty, they get a fifty percent of their new pay increase. You don't give them that plus two percent. You're already giving them a six or seven thousand dollar jump. Why do you add two percent to it? I don't like your two percent program.
You're asking why they're getting a raise plus a two percent.
Why are we giving them a big raise plus another two percent on top of it?
Okay, if, if we did that, let's look at the chief's number. Okay, look at the chief's.
The chief is already at the top of scale, so his is even, is clear out of the conversation.
Okay. But if we, if we did not do the two percent, the chief would actually be less than the top of scale.
The chief is already at the top of scale, so he gets two percent, because that's all he gets is two percent.
Right.
Okay, the rest of these guys are getting an additional four or five thousand.
Because they're stepping through the...
But why do they get in two percent on top of it?
All the steps get two percent.
They don't have to. That wasn't part of the steps that we talked about.
How would, how would you...
You just give them the difference.
How, how, how would you...
If they're at twenty-five dollars an hour and they get half of it one year, that puts them at twenty-seven fifty. If they get the next half the next year, that puts them at thirty bucks.
Do you think that at twenty, in twenty twenty, they're in the right place?
Yeah, because that's where they're going to start when they get there. It's going to be another small increase.
The plan, we, we're going into, the whole concept, your mayor, was we were going to phase it in over a two-year period of time. They would actually be in the pay plan...
And you was going to figure out where they was going to be in the pay plan in twenty twenty, and they was going to get half of it this year, and then they would be right in where they was going to be the next year.
In other words, you get, get half the raise each year, but not a cost of living adjustment with...
Well, I don't, why would you get a big raise and a cost of living adjustment with?
I don't know. It's a union thing. I don't quite understand either.
But, no, it's not a union thing. It's, that's how they get their raises. But I don't know why it's a bit, all of our, it's a non, I mean, the non-union people get two percent. That's what their raise is every year. If, but if you're getting a thirty, a five dollar an hour raise, you get five dollars an hour plus two percent.
If, if you look at, if you look at the twenty eighteen number, here's the thing. Multiply that by two percent. Then you get what it would be in twenty nineteen. And what I did was, is I took that two percent increase in twenty nineteen, added it to twenty twenty, and divided it by two to get the average halfway. And that is without a, a cost of living adjustment.
I hate that term.
If, 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 if we, if there's an agreement upon what the twenty twenty number is, what do you think the twenty eighteen, or the twenty nineteen pays in there?
The twenty nineteen number should be half the difference between the twenty eighteen number and the twenty twenty number. The twenty nineteen number should be the difference, fifty, right in the center.
Okay, so what that does is that does not acknowledge that the pay plan would get a two percent increase in twenty nineteen.
Well, from July one of twenty eighteen to July one of twenty twenty, he's getting a ten thousand dollar increase. I don't think he needs another two percent. That's five thousand a year. He'll start getting his two percent when he hits the actual scale.
And he hits the actual scale, beginning nineteen at fifty percent.
Well, he only get one percent. That number on this side of the paper for July one of twenty nineteen is not on this side of the paper.
Which, which side are you talking about here?
Your pay plan side.
Okay, that shows, what, what's the pay plan side show for you?
It says fifty-six, eight, sixty-six. For July one of two thousand nineteen for the assistant chief.
Right.
On this side, it shows fifty-four, nine, seventy-eight.
Which is halfway between twenty twenty and twenty nineteen. Now, recognize that he has a step increase going on there, because he's not all the way through the pay plan.
Fifty-four, nine, seventy-eight is halfway between fifty-five, sixty-five, sixty-three, thirty.
Fifty-five, sixty-five plus two percent. It's halfway be, fifty-four, nine, seventy-eight is halfway between fifty-eight, seven, thirty, fifty-eight, three, seventy-nine, and fifty-five, five, sixty-five times two percent.
Why are we taking it times two percent?
Because July first is when you would see a new wage increase for all of these people, regardless of whether they were, if, if there was no phasing, what do you think the number would be on July first of nineteen?
The number for July first of nineteen that's halfway in between July first of twenty twenty is fifty-five, four, forty-seven, fifty, here.
Right. But it's less than that if you take into account the fact that the fifty, if you look at what the assistant chief is making right now, fifty thousand, five, sixty-five, you look at that number, that's not a part of the pay plan. It becomes a part of the pay plan at fifty percent between that fifty thousand, five, sixty-five number, beginning in July first of two thousand nineteen. If you took, if, if, if we weren't going to do the pay plan at all, and you gave the assistant chief fifty thousand, five, sixty-five times two percent, what would you get? Without a pay plan?
July first.
I don't know.
Fifty-one, five, seventy-six, thirty.
Okay? Now you see what the top of scale is at fifty-eight, three, seventy-nine? You add that together and divide by two.
Yes, I think you fifty-one, five, seven?
Six, seventy-one plus fifty-eight, three, seventy-nine. I see what he's saying. He just doesn't like the fact that you're giving them a raise plus a cost of living adjustment at the same time.
You do that with everybody else in this organization. I mean, if you don't do the two percent, they actually are going to be losing against the internal comparabilities.
I see both sides. I'm just...
Yeah.
I just think somebody that's getting a ten thousand dollar raise over a two-year period could probably do about the two percent.
Well, then don't give them ten thousand, give them eight, and give them two percent. I mean, just, just figure out what you want to do and give it to them.
Well, we, I thought we had it figured out.
The ten thousand is incorporating the two percent. If you take the, if you, if you want to not do the two percent, you're going to, you're going to reduce it by a thousand bucks.
Yeah.
And then it won't matter. And then it won't match with the pay plan that is already in existence, let alone the chief and the assistant chief. If we want to look at it in context of the other portions of the pay plan. That's why I incorporated this pay plan, which we talked about, into the existing one that we have. And with the chief and the assistant chief making those same steps, if they didn't get the 2%, they would be below what the scales would be.
I think it's a matter of different level of business that you have. This is, in, in this organization, in other like it, you get your 2% every year, whereas in other organizations, private industry, you don't necessarily get a 2% every year. You get a raise.
I like dollar amounts. A lot easier to keep track of this.
It's, it's a different, public versus private. The way pay is determined.
There, there's, there's no bonuses in the public sector, there's no profit sharing. There's no profit sharing.
Basically, a guaranteed 2% bonus every year.
That's how it's done.
Any more discussion on the police department pay plan?
I'd like to have a motion authorized.
It says discuss, doesn't say.
Well, direct, then direction to understand that we would incorporate this into the budget. Recognizing that the pay plan itself is not formal until you all endorse it again. I just need to have direction, do we keep going this direction or are we going to do something?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we need to have something in the budget to compensate our police department.
Well.
Whether or not we, I'm not saying that I'm agreeing with this yet, I'm not saying I'm disagreeing either, so. But yes, if that's what you're looking for.
It's not that, I, I, I need to know the real numbers because we're starting to put the budget together. This needs to be fixed, you want to change this.
Right, the budget's not finalized till March 1st, right? So, we're exact, right?
Well, actually, we do. We're, we're putting, we're putting numbers together right now that incorporates all kinds of salaries and, and wages and benefits for everybody in the budget now to get to that.
I, I realize that, but still. As long as we have a line item in there, if you want to use these numbers, can we talk about it next time?
Okay, we can talk about it next time. Scott, I haven't heard from you as far as what it is that you may have a concern about.
No, I'm just saying you've made the comment, you wanted someone to make a motion.
Right, to give us direction.
That we're going to put something in the budget, yes.
That's not.
But it doesn't sound like we're.
There's, that's not direction.
Okay, what do you want?
I want to know whether this works or whether you need to have something else.
Um, I don't know that. I don't know if we're voting on that yet tonight, so.
All I'm saying is, is that you still have the chance to, you're going to approve the, sorry. You're going to approve the pay plan. The pay plan, that this whole pay plan. In fact, that's going to come up real quick.
Sure.
As part of an adjunct to go into the budget.
Sure.
What you're going to be asked for as far as everybody else is, well, not the union, because the union already has a 2% guarantee. You're going to be asked for everybody, really, the next council meeting. Is 2% good enough? This is what we're going to do because this is what the union does? If that's good, then we're going to take that. If we need to change something in this pay plan right now, before we get to that direction, we need to know that so that we can make that adjustment at the next meeting. This is, this is a, a, a plan that I think makes sense. I, I don't understand this, the, the issue of 2%, Darren said it.
Well, it's just a matter of the private sector versus the public sector.
And that's how it's done in the public sector.
Yeah, and that doesn't necessarily sit well with everyone.
I understand, but I don't know.
My opinion has been that we're on the low end of what we think will keep our officers that. We go ahead with it.
I'm pushing for the pay raise form, I think they've made one for a long time, but I'm starting to be wary about adding it to the pay plan. I think it needs to be its separate entity, because the police department is separate from everybody else. I think it needs to be its own resolution.
Well, it can be its own resolution. I mean, the point is, is that we use the pay plan as the template for.
I don't even want it incorporated yet. Just take it clear out of what we have and just make it its own.
All right, so we take it out, do we still use the template of what we discussed here tonight? Or do we want to start all over? We've been at this for three months.
I know.
And this is exactly what I thought we'd talked about.
Well, I think the 2% was throwing me off. It is what we talked about, but that 2% part is what I don't.
Well, it's only a mountain of $1,000 a person.
And it's the transition year, that's it.
I'm okay with just take it out of the pay, just make it its own.
Well, then we'll do two pay plans. We can do that sideways side, that's fine. I mean, i- is there agreement that the chief should be the same as the public works director?
I'm okay with the pay, I'm okay with the, start with the pay plan, I just don't want it to, I just want it separate from the, a separate resolution.
Okay. That can be done.
Is that the direction you needed?
I'm sure, if that's what, if you guys feel comfortable with it. I mean, I, I'm putting the cards on the table here. I'm looking cards on the table here, folks, we, we did this, is this okay?
I'm, I'm glad I didn't have to sit through all the minutia of it. I appreciate you guys doing it, and I'm fine with this. So, that's where I'm at.
Number wise, I'm good. If you want to keep it separate, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
I'm for it.
Okay. Look up first claims.
Any discussion on claims?
Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
I just saw this. Are we, are we tracking pretty good on what we expect for law center bills?
And where we expected it to be where we're actually at? Chief, I ask, do you think we're tracking pretty close on projections versus where we're actually at on the law center bills on our portion?
I, I think so.
No, I mean, we've had over a year of energy use out there, and so things are kind of where we expected them to be.
Yeah, I think it's settling in there after that first, first year where we really didn't know, I think.
And a lot of things get us in.
I think now we got some consistent numbers we can kind of go off of. Where we're going to be at year after year, hopefully, so.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Those. Public comments? Reports?
Um, we've talked a lot about what's going to be happening here, but we're going to have a pretty large meeting at the next, next Thursday night. We're going to be able to get some of the stuff that couldn't quite fit in as far as the holiday period for this meeting, but then we're also going to be talking about some, get, get some budget direction. We're going to talk about fund balance, we'll talk, talk about, you know, what are we going to establish for wages as far as how we put it into the budget. We're going to be looking at, I'll, I'll give more of an insight as far as what the bond issue is going to be like on the 17th. You're going to be asked to actually induce the GO bond as far as its sale is concerned. We originally thought that we, with the GO bond, we originally thought that we were going to have to pass a preliminary resolution so that we can incorporate it into the bond. But in talking to bond coun, or not bond council, but with our, our, uh, Northern Securities, our advisor for the, the financial management of the bond sale, uh, they're saying that we ought to just go and get the money now. Rates are really good, because the stock market's instability, it's actually making bonds more attractive to owners. As a result, it's driving down the price. We might be able to save 25 to 50 basis points right now compared to what was being projected as recently as a month ago. Um, so, we're going to actually start the process on the 17th and, and talk about, have, have bond council, uh, is doing the work on this right now, Ehrson Cooney. The, the issue is actually going to say that this is for street improvements and related sidewalk, you know, if you've got to do some entry ramps, ABA ramps kind of thing. Um, and anything incorporated right along the side of the paving. It is not looking, we're not looking to do any land acquisition. We're really trying to do just things curb to curb and make it as simple as possible. Recognizing that if there is improvements that need to be made correspondingly, like streetlights and stuff like that, that we will pay for that out of our utility costs and not incorporate that into the bond. The whole idea here is to get as much street work done as, as possible. Another topic that we'll talk about next week is, is how we're going to fund the CBDG program. Because understand that while we got a, we approved a contract for $600,000 grant tonight, that is $600,000 against a million one. We still have to come up with $500,000, which we will talk about at, at that meeting too. So, the, talk about budget is, it's going to be really talking about some format and, and talk about fund balances and, and get direction on some of the general things that we have to incorporate into the budget. We have been working with data tech and, and with, um, a summit, on the summit plan as far as figuring out how to present the budget. We've struggled a lot this past year, we've been struggling really for a long, long, long time as far as getting accurate information that translates from the accountancy function to the budgeting function. It doesn't go smoothly. Candidly, it's, it's, it's a real, a real difficult process. And a lot of that's due to the fact that we haven't been running this program correctly for more than 10 years. There's been a lot of, a lot of gaps in what you're supposed to do and how it's supposed to be done. And we, we've been spending a lot of time, Brenda and Sandy have been spending a lot of time with data tech in trying to get these budgets straightened out. We have a format that is not the same as what we had last year as far as readability is concerned, although we have a format that now because of our work with data tech, is going to show effectively the same information, so it will be better than the computer sheets that we were getting from them last year. On the other hand, we still are trying to get good summary data. We're still trying to get fund balances established in each of the accounts and to know what our total expenditure is in the water fund versus the water fund and what our total revenues are for those two. We don't have good summary, summary data for that right now. It's something that Chris is working on as well as Brenda and Sandy. Getting that. But what we're going to be talking about mostly at, at, at next meeting as far as budget's concerned is getting general direction about some things that we've then incorporated into the budget development. Other than that, um, we received Dennis' control, or rather, Danny could say this, but Dennis Harbor is, is handed in his resignation effective 30, March 29. We are looking at that job from the standpoint of how we're going to fill it. And I think one of the things that we would like to do is actually post that as quick as possible to find out if there's internal candidates. And if not, I think it's going to be a recruitment process to try and get somebody to, to take that job. Because in the private sector, that job might be worth a heck of a lot more money in the private sector than what we pay. We, we have to find somebody that really wants to do this job and something with the recognition that if you're going to look at it in other venues, it's going to pay a lot less than the private sector. Those are big issues that are coming up, so. That's all I really have to look for.
Danny? Yeah, real quick, uh, just a couple of things. Of course, automated meter reading installation begun again for the first year, they're back, so they're hitting it hard on our gas and, and water meters. Uh, they should have some more people coming in with electric. Right now, it's just one individual in town, that's Joe working there, so, uh, doing good there. Of course, with that new installation, of course, this is our first month of meter reading with, since the installation process has started, so we're doing little, little hiccups here and there, working on the process. So, we have had to update some software, update some hardware, and then also training some meter readers on the process, and, and things are different right now. So, it's, it's been a struggle, this, plus with the holiday involved, it's been a struggle the last, right, we can have three meters, we normally read in three to four days, so, so the bills will probably be, uh, you know, the off a little bit for the community. We'll be investigating some other stuff to get caught up, but it's, uh, nothing we can't handle and work through, it's just the, the bugs of the new process. Also, second thing is, of course, the mayor mentioned about the, the public notifications with PNSO, as, as the pipeline, hazardous material safety administration, the IUV, Ivy Utility Board, that's here last week, did an inspection on our pipeline, and that was one thing we found, it was a fault we didn't have updated, it was that documentation we had to get there. The second thing was, this went out in the, in the mail to all the public for the most part, a lot of these went out. And another thing we just kind of get done, or they made note on our report was, not enough public officials are responding to the, to the report. So, this is a survey that comes out, and each responds. So, definitely if the council members, the mayor, everybody, public officials receive those, we need to really get you to respond and send those back. Make sure on the back, there's an area where you fill out with your name and title and all that stuff. Make sure you put on a public official or councilman, mayor, so that way it gets in there. Uh, if we don't get a big enough response, uh, probably the next six months, maybe we have to sit down and do it.
Yes.
Especially.
That's the thing that we, we probably didn't know we needed to put who we were.
Right, yeah.
I'm sending them back, but.
Right, yeah, so we want to make sure on there is put your title, and I know that a lot of times it comes to your home and just says your name or current resident. You just fill it out, you don't put down, you know, councilor or something like that. And that's, again, work in the process, so that's why I just, you know, want to bring your attention, bring that up. So, uh. And I have one for somebody that need one, and this says councilman, so you can have it. Uh, sewer, sewer plan updated, last two weeks, we submitted our SRF application for state revolving fund to get, to secure that in case we need it. Uh, we submitted our facility plan in DNR on time, it'll be July, January 31 deadline. And of course, our anti-dag reports on the 30-day public notice is out now, we should work it there, so we're caught up there. And then, of course, last thing I know, Gary talking about personnel updates, we did have a mechanic position posted for five days, and we did have internal applicants, we'll be going through that process, selection. And then also, like I said, Dennis, officially submitted his letter, officially, officially his retirement letter, he's retired. So, it'll end in April, but his last day at work to March.
So, mechanic position, was it in the post-public here or just internally?
Just internally, it's five day for union required, so.
We expect to interview Dick this week, that G M. We expect to interview Dick this week, that KMA didn't determine qualification. If it doesn't work out, then we go public. You know, yield of remaining of my time to further develop further.
I handed each of you the sheet, I won't walk you through every bit of it, but last year, we, about this time, we talked about the Rock Mountain Institute, E-Lab Accelerator, and you all said it's too soon, come back in a year, so come back. Just kind of reminder, we, several of us attended this in 2015, and it's really what kickstarted the energy independence that helped. The council had talked about becoming an energy independent here, but there hadn't been group think and group effort and any guided plan on how to do that. And so John, John Hilbert was able to attend and some others, and it really was what helped us have a coalesce around an idea and decide what the first couple, three years needed to look like. If you look at the topics that they're interested in talking about this year, there's a couple that make, I think makes sense for us. One is new business models for utilities and other solutions providers. The reason I'm saying that is they're moving into a world more and more where the, the cost of energy is, it's becoming a smaller portion of our costs, right? And so we need to be thinking about other ways that we look at margins and net revenues in order to support our community. So I think this is one of those areas where we could start talking about things that we're already doing, alternative generation, energy efficiency programs, aggressive energy efficiency programs, that can be a different model than is typical and get some out, get some real good industry expertise to help us refine that and, and, and set some targets. Another one might be looking at grid modernization. We know for sure that we have grid issues and that we're in the process of doing some evaluation. So two or three of these could really work well for us. What I need to know from you before I spend the time to put in the application is that is if we were to be invited, is it something that we want plenty of the money and create a team to go to? It's going to probably cost us roughly 12 grand. It's about $2,000 a person, they want you to send five to seven people. Not everyone would be from this community. They'd want us to try to pull in somebody from outside that's working on our team. We probably wanted two to three people that would be outside the community. There's a good chance that we pay for themselves, but in the past, we've paid for one and we, and one paid for themselves. So I just need to know whether or not you want me to move forward with the application, recognizing the potential costs and benefits. Obviously can have some discussion about that.
To make it as an agenda item for the next meeting?
Well, no, because it's, the application deadline is 18, so if it looks like it's something you're interested, I mean, yes, I do, if there's interest, but I got to start working on it already. We're going to move forward with the application. So I mean, if you guys have some feelings on that and you let me know, five by now, or you can tell me one-on-one whether, whether or not things, we're spending some time on the application. Obviously, we've had two, two weeks in a row, we've done some demonstrations or showing information on maps. Gage, as a Vista service member, has been doing a lot of that work because it relates to the project that he's working on. We're able to leverage that time and expertise he's developing and is doing some other things. So we're going to continue to, we're using free software. We did invest in a computer because the one that we've got, I, literally, you click and you sit and wait for three or four minutes while the map updates and then he clicks again. And we, service members don't make that much, but it's still a waste of time.
Right.
So we did do that. We're going to continue to add new things, particularly what we're, like Danny mentioned, we're trying to get the utility information and get this so that our people out in the field can use this as a resource. Healing's been working hard to get the iWork system up and running. It's, that's the pavement assessment, fleet management. We're going to move our permitting on, on the system and our code enforcement so we can track and manage code violations there and there's a community engagement piece. So hopefully within the next month, we're going to see that go live. You'll notice that I'm working with the school to develop a, an application for the BW settlement grant. If they're, if they continue to move forward and were awarded, it would mean an electric bus in their fleet. The cool thing about that for us is that we sell them the fuel, which is not something we do right now. It's a, down the road, it might have an up. But, you know, a lot of buses sit idle during the summer and that's a battery that we could use to supplement our system. The other stuff's pretty straightforward. I do, we have done some update on the website. Most of what was on the old websites been updated and put on there. And we, just some numbers, give you an idea how much it uses. We've got 869 people looking at it in the last 30 days. They've looked at 2,400 pages and Unicorns Center is one of those that tops up a lot. I just wanted to see what kind of information they're looking for. Do you want to have any discussion on the, on the E-Lab Accelerator application?
My first thought would be with the money situation, trying to pinch pennies and have another cost and the amount of work that you probably have lined up, it may not be good.
Well, I think it's been a lot of benefit to us. I think it's something we ought to consider, continue to approach that. Given us a lot of direction in the past.
Anyone else have thoughts?
You got an idea of what five or six people you would like to take?
I don't. I mean, I would assume that there would be, I mean, typically, I would say the, the mayor and the council member should go. And then, you know, probably one or two other staff members, then I'd start looking outside our community at, you know, one person potentially would be Jeff Peerts because he's working with us on the, from the state level on the energy independence grant. Or then you've got somebody from Cadmus that might be able to come and provide some expertise. Or you could look at one or two people from Iowa State that are working with us on our grid evaluation. It might be a great time to bring them out there and say, you know, here's some, here's what we've all been talking about, but now you can just hear from people all around the country. So I think we've got a number of people that we could potentially draw on. I'm really interested in how we might, if I, I think my thinking on this is if we were to move forward on the application, it makes sense to look at the inclusive financing for houses and talk about, have we've got some ideas on how we can invest in houses and, and make our margin, it would reduce costs for consumers while increasing our margins on our utilities. But maybe there's some things that we're not thinking about in that process. Maybe we could be doing some sort of additional stuff on those homes that we're not talking about right now that would further improve both their cost structure and our revenue structures. So when we start talking about that, maybe we pull in one or two people that's been helping us from EESI on that, or another person Iowa State that's, that's working hard on residential energy efficiency and doing grant work with institutions around the country. So, I mean, depending on the direction, we, we have a lot of different people that could be pulled in that would, when you get three days of their focused time, it's amazing what you pull out of them, right?
It's amazing the intelligence, it's amazing the level of information that they have. I mean, it's.
Just the one thing we did that, where we just talked about, when we were talking about energy independence, we went out there with a different term. And we had some discussion in our group about energy independence and what it could mean for Bluefield, but we were calling it something else. And they had a guy that was a branding expert that came and sat down and talked with us and it helped us change the way that we were talking about it. We went from a group that was kind of wishy-washy to a group that was able to get solid behind it just because of a change in wording, right? And we, it's the kind of thing that it's hard to do when you sit in isolation and, and with the same people that you talk to all the time, it's not that the people here aren't creative and innovative, it's just that we hear each other all the time, right? And so this is just a way to increase your exposure and, and allow really focused effort to get something done in a short period of time. Just having three days where you're, I mean, you've got no cell phone service, you're isolated, you don't have any choice but to do what you're doing.
And you're on task from first thing in the morning until?
Midnight, usually.
Late every day. It's, it's works, but I feel it's an investment.
They have one spot and there's a break and everybody huddles in that spot.
Literally. And they do that on purpose.
I didn't help you.
No, that's okay.
I don't, I mean.
Do any of you have any interest? I'm going.
So we're going to be working today, it's all the charge.
I mean, you've been there before, obviously, you've been with the show.
Well, I wouldn't be bringing it up if I didn't think there was a benefit to it. And it isn't really, the benefit isn't for me personally because I have the opportunity to get exposed to this stuff all the time, right? It's about taking two or three of you along and saying, okay, how can we focus on getting this detail of the thing done? That's the real benefit.
I think that, I just think that it would be a great investment for some folks to go.
I guess I got a problem with moving forward with the application, but I, I think any outsider should fund themselves.
If he does move forward with it and we get selected, though, we kind of have to go. I mean, it's fairly obligated is the thing. And I don't know how to describe all the players that are involved and what their backgrounds are, but kind of high-level stuff. We had Cornell University, the professor from Cornell devoted X amount of hours to us for so many months, free of charge, just, just because we have a problem or you come up with something and.
You may have a group of 20 people say, oh, well, we've got that project already started. Let us give you volumes of information about it that we've already looked at. And that, that's the thing that goes on there on the network when you've got vacation time. You can take your life. I should take yours.
I guess before we do the process, I'd like to at least have enough commitment from other people.
I think that's important. You have to have somebody that'll go.
I mean, there is no, you fill out, we say, okay, go ahead, you fill it out, okay, we can go, and then nobody wants to go.
All right, that gets stuff.
You just won't.
How long have you taken to fill it out?
Well, it's probably a couple of days worth of work. I mean, it always takes longer than I think it's going to, right? But that's, I've got old applications to draw on.
I mean, do you? I mean, what I'm sensing here is some people have to make some decisions here. Can we get it?
So I can get started and come back with you with a more formal, you know, I think, I don't have to have it complete next week, but I can get started and give you some.
Guys, look at it. I mean, you're business owners, you can always do anything anytime.
Right. I think the point is, is do it next week.
There you go.
Yeah. But, but.
It'd be a different story.
But, but the, but let's have a conclusion drawn next week. Chris will get some of this stuff started.
Okay.
See if you can get some commitment or talk, try to get a list of who you're thinking maybe to see if you can find the people. And see if you can get the outsiders to, I don't mean that bad, but.
And if you have thought.
Can we get a grant paper?
We may be able to come up with a part of it. Yeah, well, it's not a guarantee, so. Any other thoughts you guys have on anything else?
Is your iWork stuff, is it, is it going on the website? Is there, is there a thing that someone in the community can look on there and see all the codes that require to put up a shit or?
Yeah, so right now, the entire, the entire code is on there. It's got its, we just, I'm going to just get.
I have issues with it once in a while, kicks me off, and I got to get, try to get on it two or three times.
On your phone or on the, on the computer?
On my phone. That is my.
Well, yeah. So just quickly, if you go to government and you go to code ordinances, and you've got everything quickly listed. He must have been, you've been a Dan. So you've got every chapter, right? And then when you go into any particular chapter, so if we're talking about planning and zoning, that's 165, I think. And then within that.
Yeah, you have to refresh in order to get it to come up.
Yeah, I'll work on that. But then there's each point within that, so you could say, okay, I want to know about, I don't know.
Permit.
How's conforming uses, there you're at, and then you're there, right? Or permits, and so until we have the code, it's all there. So all the regulations are there. And the iWork, what that piece does is add the permitting process, so you, soon we'll have it, so you could fill out either paper or potentially go online and fill out the permit application online. And it'll tie, it'll tie those permits to a GIS layer so that we'll have parcels tied, and so it all went together.
Can you pay online?
We can, yeah, we'll have that option too.
Chief?
All I got is Alyssa's gone to the academy, so we'll see her in about four months. She'll be working, we have her working about every other weekend just to fill up, fill in some positions because we're going to be shorthanded with Dalton being new. Dalton got his uniform, so whenever you're ready to take a picture or whatever.
You want to do it next Thursday, bring it. Does that work for you, Karen?
What time, probably?
6:30 or so, or 7?
6:30, here.
We're going to wind up. Let's do it the 17th.
17th.
We're going to wind up having meetings here about probably every Thursday. Let's just do it the 17th at 7:00, does that work better, Karen?
That's, that's all I got.
Fire chief? New turnout gears are in service, everything's going right, no problems. We just have one set, we're working with Lion, they're getting that fixed. The new SCBA showed up just before Christmas, they're setting down the station. Next Tuesday night, John Craft from Sandry Fire will be here to fit, test all their face pieces, get their official fit testing. It'll be about a two-week time period where the old guys will be training and practicing with them before we throw them into service. I got a text today, the new pagers arrived, we're still waiting on radios to show up so we start getting those programmed and installed into trucks. We currently have two new radios in trucks right now. The guys say it's amazing they can talk to somebody again. So we're going in the right direction. Over Christmas break, one of my firemen, we've been doing a lot of houseclean stuff. We pulled up an old inventory system that we had and he's got it going up and going. As of right now, I think he's 99% has everything inventoried at the fire station, every fitting, every nut, bolt, and a piece of hose. So we're working on that. Next plan is to start inventory by apparatus so that we can color code each piece of equipment should be on one particular truck versus another. We've got our ID markings, I've got to get those on the new SCBA. I do have a remark, in the past week, I've been in two houses that I wouldn't put my old dog in. It's sad, we've got, I don't know, we're at on the codes and enforcement and these rentals, both of these were rentals, they're not fit to be inhabited, and people are living in them. And then today, we were out on a call, and there's houses with no house numbers on them, this one was on South Madison. I don't know what the code is, but some of them've only got these little bitty numbers, we can't see those from the road. Some of them don't even have that. But this housing thing, I mean, it was sad, this house I was at early this morning, it should have been condemned, I don't know why it's even out there, it shouldn't, it needs to be tore down, and I know over these people, it's probably all they have, but it's a bad situation waiting to happen. So, I know we've talked about it, I'm just bringing it up again. Other than that, firemen are doing good, their Christmas party is the 12th, so Drakesville and the other three departments will be kind of covering our district that particular night. So, and then the following weekend, we're covering Drakesville's, so, so they can have their Christmas party. That's all I've got.
Council updates?
Got a citizen contact, he brought something up that we talked about before, and so I'm just going to throw it out there. There's a house that, they've got a sump pump in their basement, and year-round, it's pumping water out on the road, it's one of the worst roads we've got in town. And so, I don't know what the code says about that, I don't know what, you know, what's allowable, but it's really causing havoc with our roads, and I brought this up a couple years ago. What do we do? What are we finding, how are we going to figure out what the code is and who's going to look into this? Do I text one of you two with this project, or?
It crosses boundaries, but the, the, as far as I recall, some pumps, the regulation is that it can't pump into the sewer, I don't think we have anything that says where it has to go, or where.
Okay.
So maybe something that we need to look at.
I think we need to look at, at least this specific one.
Is there any storm sewer in the area?
No, it's right up on North Street where all the problem is, it's like, it's wet there year-round, because it, and there's no.
Actually, you're doing it the right way, is discharging it out, I think the real question here is, is where it's going, I mean, is, if it's not going in a curb and gutter situation.
Well, if it goes in a curb and gutter and it just sits there.
And that's a street problem.
That's a street problem, I mean, it's not a.
Well, if you got sump pumps set too low, and you're just pumping groundwater forever and ever and ever, because you haven't.
I see what you're saying, you're not, they're pumping more than just runoff.
Yeah.
If it's running all the time, something wrong.
And that's been going on for years, I've brought it up.
That probably needs, they probably need to look at the sump pump and, and where it's at.
So, is there a?
I mean, has he got a spring underneath his house?
I don't know, maybe the sump pump's at 10 feet down, I don't know, but it's not a threat to go in somebody's house, so are we able to dictate whether or not they can do that?
They'll leak.
So, we could, we could make an inquiry.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think you just contact, or contact and find out what's going on, but I mean, if, if he's truly discharging out to the street.
Yeah.
He's doing it legally, one in a row.
You could adjust the ordinance where you can't direct the flow to the street, but it has to stop before it gets turned, but you've, ultimately, it depends on the grade too, where it's going to go, so.
You're not, you're gaining nothing.
Right, exactly.
If mine out five foot back from the street, it's still going to go.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you can't go, you can try, but you can't, you know, if the grade's going that way, you're stuck anyway, you know?
And it does cause slick streaks, because I mean, where mine pumps out, it runs the ice clear down to the next intersection.
If I have a dozen that way.
True value today, and a citizen hit me up, he said, they ever go do something about that?
The real issue is the street, you know, if the street doesn't drain right, or if the street doesn't have some. Running all the time, there's got to be something else going on. I hope it's not built on a spring.
Dan's has been there a long time.
Has the sump pump been running long?
I'd say give Chris the address, and, or the, make an inquiry about it.
It's been nine years. Anybody else got anything?
Is there a reason why we can't start the next week's meeting at 6?
I think that'd be great.
It's going to be a longer meeting, I mean, to kind of get us.
Trying to chop them up as much as possible.
I know, but I mean, I'm just saying, if we start a little bit earlier, we're still going to be here till 9 or 9:30.
Is that bothering anybody?
Nope. Let's do that.
All right, close session, pursuant to Iowa Code 21.51, seek to discuss strategy with council and matter of presentee and litigation or litigation. Mark's disposition, we'd like to be pre-guested for this advantage position of the government on that litigation.
So what, what, we're going to, you guys? Yeah.
That's what I suggested, I could vote.
They haven't taken a vote yet, they haven't voted yet, right?
So much.
Yes.
So I have a lot of. Earl?
Yes.
Jack?
Jack.
Close session. Aaron?
We'll just stop him.
Stop, okay.
Yes. We even put the other word.